Okay, I'm going to call the town council meeting of December 14, 2015 to order at 8:01 PM. My name is Joe Cubic, I'm chairman of the town council for a little while longer. And the first, there's two items on the agenda, the first is the pledge of allegiance and the second is a moment of silence remembering Sandy Hook, so I'd like everyone to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, reason, justice, for all.
And I request that you please remain standing. And I request that we enter into a moment of silence for 26 seconds. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled town council meeting of November 10, 2015, and the special council meeting of December 7, 2015, these minutes have been circulated, councilmen all have it, I assume once again that we'll dispense with the reading of the minutes. And I would like to entertain a motion, but the chair's looking for, I'd like to take both minutes, the minutes separately, the first is the minutes of November 10, 2015, chair's looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion to approve by Mr. Santi, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hoydic. Any discussion on the motion? And chair will like to lead off. That directing the attention to the night, it's item 9.2, Longbrook Park skating rink. And the minutes reflect that a motion was made and seconded by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Santi, to approve the rink based on verbal agreement with the Wilcoxon School Fathers Club, Parks Department, and Town Attorney. That's not what the motion was, and I think the members here will concur that it was to, subject to the approval of those three bodies, so it's suggesting that was actually a formal agreement, that wasn't the case. So the chair's looking for a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that the motion was to go ahead with the Longbrook Park, subject to the approval of the Wilcoxon School Fathers Club, the Parks Department, and the Town Attorney.
So move.
Is there a motion by Mr. Santi? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Phillips. Ms. Phillips, any discussion on the motion to amend?
Perfectly set.
If there's no objection to the motion, then we'll accept that as a friendly amendment, and we'll proceed on with the motion to approve the minutes as amended, if there's no objection. Hearing none, then any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move.
Any discussion, Mr. Catalano? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries. Oh.
Opposed.
One in opposition, chair votes yes, motion carries eight to one. And Mr. Gavin Forrester is absent today due to a family member, so carries eight to one. Next item on, next item is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of December 7, 2015, chair's looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Seven to one.
December 7, 2015.
Seven to one, the vote. Pete's not here.
Oh, Pete's not here, I'm sorry. Seven to one. It's appalling. Okay. Okay, so the, motion carries seven to one, Mr. Massey's absent as well, I see. The motion to, next is a motion to approve, chair's looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the December 7, 2015 meeting.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Santi, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hoydic. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing on all those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries eight to zero. And the agenda now calls for the dispensing of the public forum, councilman responses to that, because there's no public forum, dispense with communications bills, petitions, dispense with mayor's report, dispense with questions for the mayor, dispense with unfinished business, dispense with ordinances and resolutions, and on to new business. And the first item on the agenda is the certification of election of new council members. And I'll read out the, read out, read from the agenda, the names of the persons that have been elected to the town council, and I'll read the whole resolution. As certified on November 4, 2015, at the regular election held on November 3, 2015, in accordance with provisions of section 7.1.1 of the town charter, the following persons were duly elected to the office of councilman for the term of two years commencing December 14, 2015. First District Honorable Beth Osborne DePonte, Second District Honorable Mark E. Dumas, Third District Honorable Wally Kadim, Fourth District Honorable David L. Harden, Fifth District Honorable Joseph P. Gresko, Sixth District Honorable Philip L. Young, Seventh District Honorable Mary Ann E. Antezzo, Eighth District Honorable J. Vincent Chase, Ninth District Honorable Alan Llewellyn, and Tenth District Honorable Tina M. Manis. And the resolution is resolved at the foregoing certification of election of council members for a term of two years commencing December 14, 2015B, and is hereby accepted. Chair's looking for a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Santi, seconded by Mr. Hoydic. Any discussion on the motion to approve the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries eight to zero. Next is, oh, where's Susan Pollak? Oh, there you are, why don't you just step up? Next is the certi, item 9B, certificates of appreciation to council members. And you propose that they come down and accept their certificate?
Yes, and if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm giving out plaques for all outgoing elected officials, land use boards, board of ed, and constables as well.
Well, I don't have the, those lists, do you have the list of those names of non-council manic persons?
Yes.
Why don't you distribute those petitions, those plaques and whatever they are first?
Sure, I'll do them first, and then we'll do the town council.
Thank you.
And Mayor Harkins, if you like, to assist me in handing out the plaques, that'd be nice. And members of our town clerk staff will be helping getting those plaques out. So ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll be presenting certificates of appreciation plaques to the retiring elected members of the following boards and commissions, the zoning board of appeals, the zoning commission, the planning commission, constables, board of education, and the Stratford Town Council. At this time, Mayor Harkins, okay, you're over there. All right, first we'll begin with the retiring members of the land use boards, once your name is called, please come up and receive your plaque. From the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Fred Hyatt, having served from January 2012 to 2016. From the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Sean Kellerman, having served from January 2012 to 2016. From the zoning commission, from Mr. Tony Smith, having served from January 2012 to 2016. Beth DePonte is accepting his plaque for him. From the zoning commission, Ms. Linda Manos, having served from January 2012 to 2016. From the planning commission, Ms. Anne Alice Baker, having served from January 2012 to 2016. And also from the planning commission, Mr. Joe Paul, having served from January 2012 to 2016. I think Mr. Paul's not present, we'll get that to him after. Next will be our constables, Constable Paul Mathewson, having served from November 2003 to November 2015. Paul? And our next constable, William D. Federico, having served from November 2005 through November 2015. Now we'll go on to the board of education retiring members, board of education member Andrea Valu, having served from December 2011 through December 2015. Andrea? Board of education member Robert Shalou, having served from December 2011 through December 2015. Board of education member Jancy Pous Marcone, having served from December 2011 through December 2015. And now for the retiring members of the Stratford Town Council, first was going to be Peter Massey, but I see he is not here, but he did serve the first district from December 2013 through December 2015. The Honorable Matthew Catalano, having served as second and third district council person.
I can't get it out.
Matt served from December 2009 through December 2015. Next is the Honorable Stephanie Phillips, having faithfully served as third and second district council person from December 2009 through December 2015. Next is the Honorable Jason Santi, having faithfully served as fourth district council person from December 2009 through December 2015. Jason? The Honorable Brian Dempsey, having faithfully served as fifth district council person from December 2013 through December 2015. Brian? Next is the Honorable Kenneth Poisson, having faithfully served as sixth district council person from December 2011 through December 2015. It's been noted that Gavin Forrester, seventh district council person, is not present this evening, but he did serve from January of this year, 2015, through December 2015. Next is the Honorable James Connor Jr., having faithfully served as eighth district council person from December 2009 through December 2015. The Honorable Joseph Cubic, having faithfully served as ninth district council person, and having served as a chairman of the Stratford Town Council from December 2011 through December 2015. And the Honorable Paul Hoydic, having faithfully served as tenth district council person from December 2009 through December 2015. Thank you, and that is all.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 9C, council member comments, this is a tradition for the town council, that the outgoing council members provide a farewell address, if you will. And I'll just start from my right and work around the dais, we'll start with Ms. Phillips.
Mine's are just a lot of thank yous. I am so pleased to have served the town of Stratford for these six years. I want to thank foremost my family, who, and friends, all of you who are here today, who have helped me, guided me, and kept me in a good place, and be able to serve. I want to thank my constituents, who have allowed me to come back for these three terms, I've enjoyed it. We've had our good times, and our fun times, and even some times that we went around the block a few times, but I've enjoyed it. And nothing pleases me more than to welcome the new council in. I want to thank Mayor Harkins, I want to thank my fellow council members, who made the six years wonderful, and I'm really proud of all of you, we're all volunteers, and I really thank and honored to have served with you. So I'm just excited today, and to thank the administration and the town of Stratford for allowing me to do this, thank you.
Thank you. Beat that, Mr. Catalano. Matt, Mr. Catalano, please.
You're all worried that I might go on and on.
He's got a phone book down there.
No, I can keep it brief, you know, it's a, it's been a great honor to serve the people of Stratford and its capacity for six years, it was a long six years. I'm grateful to be done, and to get a break, and pass over the torch to all the new fresh faces that are going to be representing us from here on out. And just a heartwells thanks to all the people who supported me, and helped me in the different efforts that we took on here. And it was, it was a very interesting time, learned a lot about myself, learned a lot about other people. And like Stephanie said, you know, there was good, there was bad, there was in the middle, I think we made some positive change on a lot of things, you know, I was, you know, a lot of people relate my whole term here to the theater, and you know, of course, I'm proud of some of the things we did there, saving the White House, and getting a world-class academy started over there, and a lot of the awareness we brought to that. But I think in my whole time here, the one project that I'm really proudest of, and went basically unnoticed by anyone, was as a chairman of the Public Works, I was, I was happy that we addressed and fixed all the drainage issues at Penders Field before we installed a million-dollar artificial surface, that was a big project, that we were able to rectify a few problems that were created by different projects over the years, and that was pretty good, along with a lot of the streetscape work that we did, me and Mr. Santi here on Barnum Avenue, trying to make our town look a little better. And grateful to be here, and thanks, everyone, and then thank all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Santi?
Well, I wanted to thank the voters in my district for the last six years to serve the town, thank my wife and family, and thank God that I won. When I took over the fourth district, it was in pretty tough shape, but working with, in a bipartisan manner, was a Democrat at the time, working with the administration and the council, we were able to move my district forward and other parts of the town forward. And you know, I just want to wish that the new council will work together, both parties, with the administration and vice versa. It was, it was an interesting six years, we had our ups, we had our downs, you know, I think it's fair to say that this council accomplished a lot over the last six years, and hopefully the town will continue to move forward for the next few years, as this council comes in, in the next few minutes. And I wanted to say thank you, and signing off.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
I'd like to thank the people who believed in me, especially the Ford that I won by. Thank you very much. This was an experience for me, something I'll never forget. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Poisson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start my thank yous with everybody that sits up here, the mayor, his whole staff, the town attorneys, our fellow counselors, for all the hard work that we've done together for the last four years. I'd especially like to thank my parents, and my wife, and my three kids, who have missed me these last four years, and who have really supported me, along with all the people in my district who supported me in all the hard work that we did. And hopefully the town's in a better place now than it was four years ago, is the way I try to look at it. I always try to do my best, it's not easy up here, it's not as easy as it looks, and I found that out four years ago. And I was sitting up here, I looked over at the mayor, and I said, "He doesn't do anything, he just sits there." And, and I'm sure everybody out there thinks that, of all of us. It is, does take a lot of work, a lot of hard work behind the scenes, and I'd just like to thank everybody that supported me, and I'd like to wish the new council, as everybody keeps calling them, all the incoming counselors, the best of luck, and please take care of our town. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Connor?
Just a few things, everybody's kind of said everything, just want to thank my family, thank the great people I worked with here for the last six years, I can't believe it's been six years, wish the new coming council and everybody that got elected, wish them luck, and to Mr. Poisson's point, try to take care of the town, other than that, happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Hoydic?
Yeah, so I'll, we'll start out with my thank yous also, thank you to my wife Laura, and my three daughters, I had three daughters living at home when I first started this six years ago, now I'm down to one, so a lot of things happened in six years. So I want to thank my other fellow counselors, Stephanie, Matt, Jason, Brian, Ken, Joe, Jim, and I'd like to thank the mayor and his staff, because anytime I needed anything, you were there for me, your staff was always there for me, and please thank your department heads also, because they've helped me out a lot in these last six years. And good wishes to the new council, you know, just let this guide you, there's always room for compromise, work with each other, do what's best for the town, do what's best for your district, and let your conscience be your guide. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, eight years ago, I got reelected for my third two-year term, and I went to the first public hearing, and a man came down, spoke at the public forum, and he was brilliant, he made great points, and I was impressed with his presentation. I went down to speak with him, and I asked him, gee, you know, you're retired, now why didn't you ever get involved earlier on? And he, he said to me that, well, you know, I have a family, I have a job, I have a house, and I'm looking at the people around me, and they all have that. And it's volunteerism that struck me, that some people are willing to step up and, and serve their community. These people on both sides of me have been willing to do that, and we now have a new class, a new, well, this is the first time we've had 10 rookies at one time, it's amazing. But they're willing to step up, they're willing to take on the responsibility, and that's amazing. It's not, you know, they're not going to be the selfish ones that sit back and complain and don't do anything, they're going to step up and try to do something about it. And that, for the people that are with me here right now, and the people that are going to be sworn in very soon, I commend you for that. It's remarkable, it's an amazing thing, it's what makes our society continue to be great. You're going to be asked to consider trees a lot, when I say, what I mean by a tree, one tree, someone's going to come up, and they're going to have a one-tree issue, and that's the most important thing to them, and that is an important thing. But you will also realize, you are going to be, you are going to be asked to consider the forest full of trees. And I can't tell you how many times we have had meetings where we're voting on sewer connection, or whether we're voting on a new sidewalk, or cutting some trees down, or a new, a new gym equipment at a gym, or a new high school. It's remarkable, the issues that you will face. In fact, you will consider and learn about issues and things that you never thought about. So the mind-expanding ability, experience that these people with me today, these councilmen that I sit with, have gone through, you also will have the opportunity to go through that education, and have that class, and someday graduate as no longer councilman on the Stratford Town Council. But you will have that opportunity, and all I ask is, and all I've asked of everybody here is, consider your motives, consider your reasons, and why you're acting. Is it really for the betterment of the town? We certainly all hope so, and that's what we can only ask. I think these councilmen sitting with me believe, by and large, certainly, I would think entirely, that the votes they made, well, maybe not most politically popular, or maybe not the easiest votes, they did what they thought was the right thing. And that's all we can ask of any volunteer public official, do what you think is right. And that's, that's what these people are, volunteers. And the new class coming in, volunteers. To the new chairman, whoever it will be, all I ask is that you treat everybody the same. People don't like to think that they're not the same, but everybody should be treated the same and fairly, I think we've heard that, this is a tough job, Mr. Poisson said this is a tough job, it is. Being chairman is probably a little harder, because all the focus is on you. If you maintain that fairness, whoever the next chairman will be, you will succeed. And all that I can say at this point is, may Godspeed guide your new council with insight, integrity, and thoughtful public intent in all your endeavors, and extend his blessings to all Stratford public servants. Thank you. Now my favorite part, chair's looking for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Santi, seconded by Mr. Hoydic, why not? We're not going to have any discussion on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries eight to zero. Meeting adjourned at 8:27 PM.
What'd they do, glue these in?
Attention, everyone, we're going to begin the meeting, please be seated. Okay, we're going to begin, if everyone will take a seat. Good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In accordance with the provision of section 2.1.3 of the Stratford Town Charter, a meeting of the newly-elected Stratford Town Council is being called to order at, what time? 8:36. On Monday evening, December 14, 2015, in council chambers, Stratford Town Hall. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's swearing-in ceremony. My name is Susan Pollak, and I am the Stratford Town Clerk, and pursuant to Stratford Town Charter, I will be presiding over this meeting until such time as a council chairperson is duly elected by the new town council. However, before that, we must administer the oath of office to our newly-elected officials. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you this evening, our very special guest, Mr. Richard Diedrickson, who will be administering the oath of office with me. But first... But first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about him. Richard Diedrickson exemplifies the best of Stratford, a native of Stratford and a graduate of Stratford High School. He spent his teaching career educating Stratford's youth, not only in the skills of grammar and literature, but also in life. His humor and light touch in the classroom inspired many of his students to read, analyze, and think about life. He started his career at Johnson Junior High School, where his first students included Dr. Beth DePonte and Ms. Susan Collier. He spent much of his career teaching youth at Bunell High School. In addition to teaching, Richard devotes his time to his wife Julie, their children, now adults, and to the community. Richard leads the Lordship Improvement Association, where he stresses the importance of Richard leads the Lordship Improvement Association, where he stresses the importance of being a caretaker of Stratford's environmental resources. He is committed to keeping the town beautiful and its minds active and inquisitive. Richard, you exemplify the best of Stratford, and at this time, I'd like to ask you to help me administer the oaths of office this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Mr. Richard Diedgerson. Mr. Diedgerson, please come on up. Mr. Diedgerson, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, simply that I'm very honored to be part of this ceremony. Thank you.
Well, with that, we'll begin the swearing-in of the following land use boards. The Planning Commission, the Zoning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. When I call your name, please come forward and stand right in front of the gate there so you may receive your oath of office. Planning Commissioners, James Vigliotti, District One. Planning Commissioner Patricia Petuski, District Two. Zoning Commissioner Scott Farrington Posner, District One. Zoning Commissioner Stephanie Phillips, District Two. Zoning Board of Appeals Commissioner David DiCilio, District Four. Zoning Appeals Commissioner Ronald Hodich, District Five. And if you would please kindly turn around and face us, we'll give you your oath of office. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Stratford so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as elected officials to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations. Next, we'll call up the constables. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your oath of office. Constable Frank Vivacqua. Constable Richard Brown. Constable Richard Brown Jr. Constable Edward Sinto. Okay, it looks like Mr. Richard Brown Jr. and Mr. Sinto are not present, and Constable John Dobus has been previously sworn in. Gentlemen, please turn around. And raise your right hand. Oh, I'm sorry, Edward Monroe, are you here? Yay, okay. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Stratford so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as elected officials to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations. Okay, next will be the members of the Board of Education. Please come forward so you may receive your oath of office. Board of Education Member Maria Baturla. Board of Education Member Susan Lance. Board of Education Member Eric Lozaro. Okay, please turn around and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Stratford so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as elected officials to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations. All right, and finally, the newly-elected Stratford Town Council. Please come forward so that you may receive your oath of office. The Honorable Beth Osborne DePonte, District One. The Honorable Mark Dumas, District Two. The Honorable Wally Kadim, District Three. The Honorable David Harden, District Four. The Honorable Joseph Gresko, District Five. The Honorable Philip Young III, District Six. The Honorable Mary Ann Antezo, District Seven. The Honorable Alan Llewellyn, District Nine. And the Honorable Tina Manus, District Ten. Oh, and one more. The Honorable Jay Vincent Chase, District Eight. All right. Okay, I think we've got you all. Okay, you can turn around, please. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Stratford so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as elected officials to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diedgerson. We're ready to begin the meeting. And the new town council, you may take your seats up here. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. We're ready to begin the meeting. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. We're ready to begin the meeting. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. We're ready to begin the meeting. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. We're ready to begin the meeting. If everyone will have their seats, thank you. We will now open the new town council. And until, I will be the temporary chairperson until we elect a new town council chairperson. At this time...
Madam Chairwoman, I rise to appoint a procedure.
Yes, Councilman Dumas.
It is my understanding that the charter does not set the method by which we will vote for the chair. I would concurrently move that the members simply announce who they're going to vote for.
Without taking nominations?
Without taking nominations.
And we do that at what point in this meeting, right now?
Right now. My motion would need a second.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Dumas, a second by Mr. Young, to just go with a vote for town council chairperson?
Correct.
Is that correct?
I would move to call a question with a vote of hands.
All right.
So all of us...
Point of information. You have to know who's actually running, so you can't just call out a name.
Mr. Kadim would like to know who is in the running for town chairperson.
Well, as a point of information, all 10 members are eligible, so each member can vote for who they'd like to be chair.
So you suggest we take a roll call vote at this time?
It could be a show of hands, Madam Chairwoman.
Firstly, everyone is, excuse me...
I feel like before we do a show of hands, though, I need to know what they're going to be voting on, so let's just get that clear.
Each member would state whom they are voting for for chair.
Understandably so, but I'm not running for chair, so we need to know who is running for chair so I can state who I'm voting for.
Town Attorney, have any assistance at this point?
So under the council rules of procedure, where a procedure isn't set forth in the council rules, Roberts Rules of Order applies. Roberts Rules of Order applies to this case to state that the chairperson can call for nominations. When the nominations are finished, you declare the nominations closed, at which point the members of the body then vote on which of those persons nominated they would like to see be the chair of the body.
Mr. Dumas, are you okay with that?
Well, I do disagree with the town attorney's interpretation of the rules. The rules do not set a method for selecting a presiding officer, but I would leave it to the chair and the membership.
Okay, so at this time, I will ask for nominations for town council chairperson. Is there a motion for nominating a town council chairperson? Mr. Gresko?
I nominate Beth DePonte.
Mr. Gresko nominates Beth DePonte as council chairperson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Philip Young will make second to nominate Beth DePonte as town council chairperson.
I move to close.
Are there no other nominations? I'm going to ask two more times. Are there any other nominations for a town council chairperson? Are there any other nominations for a town council chairperson? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to close nominations. Motion by Tina Manus, a second, please.
Wally Kadim, second.
Wally Kadim will second that motion. All those in favor of Beth DePonte as the town council chairperson, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
There are three opposed. The motion passes. It will be seven in favor of Mr. DePonte and three opposed. Mr. DePonte, you are the newly-elected chairperson. Congratulations. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the appointment of council chairman pro tempore. Is there a nomination for the appointment of the council chairman pro tempore?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Young?
I nominate Vince Chase for the chairman pro tempore.
I will second the nomination, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Can I have a move to close?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second for the move to close?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chairman, I would, there's an opportunity for debate.
We just close the...
Not for nominations, for debate before we actually hold the vote.
Okay.
I simply like to say, although my vote might not coincide with this, I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Chase. I think he will do a superb job. He will have my full support, but I wanted to highlight that before my vote. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Manus?
I'd like to concur with Mr. Dumas regarding Mr. Chase's commitment to our town and his wonderful work ethic with everyone. He's really been an example.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the appointment of council chairman pro tempore. Is there a nomination for the appointment of the council chairman pro tempore?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Young?
I nominate Vince Chase for the chairman pro tempore.
I will second the nomination, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Can I have a move to close?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second for the move to close?
Second.
Motion to close.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chairman, I would, there's an opportunity for debate.
We just close the-
Not for nominations, for debate before we actually hold the vote.
Okay.
I simply like to say, although my vote might not coincide with this, I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Chase. I think he will do a superb job. He has, will have my full support. But I wanted to highlight that before my vote. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Manis?
I'd like to concur with Mr. Dumas regarding Mr. Chase's commitment to our town and his wonderful work ethic with everyone. He's really been an exemplary person to work with thus far and has shown courtesy and respect to all members and newly elected members, and I appreciate that.
Also-
Mr. Kadim?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Also, Mr. Chase, it was a pleasure knowing you, look forward to working with you. That does not reflect my vote. Also, just a point of information, the way it was structured, how we came about, I did not feel comfortable about it. That's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Do any other members want to speak on this issue?
No.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Chase being chairman pro tempore, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chairman says aye, this passes. All, I'm sorry, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
This passes with a vote of seven to three. Mr. Chase, you are chairman pro tempore. I look forward to working with you. Next thing on the agenda is the appointment of the council clerk. Is there, does anybody have a motion for that appointment?
I make a motion for the appointment.
Great. Okay, Mr. Harden makes an emotion to have-
Carol Cabral, continue.
Okay, thank you, and at a salary of-
Whatever's set in place currently.
As outlined in grade five, step four of the current employee salary schedule.
Correct.
Wally Kadim, second.
Okay, there are three different seconds. Tina, you second.
That's how much we love it.
Okay, I'm sorry, motion to debate?
Madam Chairman, may I ask if the councilman from the fourth district would move, would accept a friendly amendment? I would like to strike the word "step four." It is my understanding that that is based on another collective bargaining agreement. The clerk is not part of that collective bargaining agreement. She has been in her position for much longer than four years, and that particular, that particular, on advice of the finance director, that particular words, "step four," does not apply to Ms. Cabral.
So I'm sorry, so you just want to leave a grade five?
I want to strike the word "step four." And the comma.
And what?
The comma and "step four."
Do you accept that amendment?
I accept it.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, okay, we have a second for that. Any discussion on that? No?
I'd like to say something, if that's possible.
Yes.
Please, thank you. I just wanted to say that another person who has been a champion for this new council-elect has been Carol Cabral. There is no politics in Carol's world. She helps us all, and she is a wonderful resource and the unsung hero of town hall. I really appreciate her, and we will keep her safe.
Just to echo that, many years I've been coming down to the town hall and speaking, and those times that I couldn't make it, she would put me on the list. She's very, very much a big part of this town, and I'm so thankful that you want to be there. Thank you.
Okay, there seems, I just want to point out that without a step in there, that the appointment does not seem to be totally complete. So, that's correct, I'm hearing. Can we ask Ms. Collier about the step? Any objections? Can you please introduce yourself?
Susan Collier, Finance Director, you can put in the words "top step" or "step six."
Okay.
It's based on years in the office, and she's been here 30 years, so.
So moved, Madam Chairwoman. Or I would move a friendly amendment should the councilman from the fourth district accept.
Is there a second for that?
I accept it.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Move to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, Chairman says aye also, ten zero, the motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is the adoption of council rules of order. We're going down through the agenda. The appointment of, we did the appointment of the council clerk, we're on part number six, the adoption of the council rules of order. You have to make a motion.
I move to adopt the Stratford Town Council Rules of Procedure as 2015 attached to our agenda.
Okay, there's a second for that, discussion?
Yes, you're talking about the amendments that we got in our pony, without the changes that we went over?
Yes.
They're just, I don't accept those.
Wally, I'm also going to amend the Stratford Town Council Rules. I will send copies around to each person. Do you need another copy down there? Essentially, what would happen is most of the rules would go back to what they were in 2013, such as to presiding officer on record in the absence of council chairman, a chairman pro tempore as appointed by the council. That should be inserted, it was left out. There's a change to council chairman should not be renewed, removed, except by an affirmative vote of we're restoring seven members. On the agenda, we are, I would ask to change the deadline for presenting new businesses to town called council clerk from 4:30 Wednesday to 4:30 Tuesday. And I'd like to change the date that the council clerk distributes its copies of the agenda to the council mayor and so forth from Thursday to Wednesday. Council committees, that's 13C, would be, cannot be changed except by an affirmative vote of seven council members. I'd like to, for item 14, duties of committee, restore the word "tape" before "recorded," as in all meetings shall be tape-recorded, and that's until we get something more up to date, but they should be recorded, not just manually. Now, to the last section of it, suspension of the rules, this misnumbered, that's very minor. It should be XXVI instead of XVII, Roman numeral 26. Lastly, 27 is a change completely. It currently says suspension of the rules, which is the previous, 26. So 27 should have the title changed back to change of rules, and we would restore the entire rule, 27, as it was in 2013. And that is, I shall read, "The foregoing rules except such as charter provisions and except as otherwise provided may be repealed, amended, or new ones added by resolution approved by the affirmative vote of seven council members." Thank you.
Okay, second on that, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, if the councilor from the seventh district would accept, I have a number of friendly amendments to propose.
First, we're going to vote on this amendment, and then we will, then we will separate these issues.
I rise to appoint a procedure. Madam Chairwoman, a amendment on amendment is permitted under the rules?
Are you amending any points that she said? That she made?
He's amending the amendment.
I'm amending her amendment.
Okay, go ahead, but we will vote separately. Go ahead.
The first friendly amendment that I would propose would be regarding per section 1A. And I would insert after the words "presiding officer" or "chair," and then throughout the remainder of the rules, to strike the word "chairman" and replace the word "chair," so that the rules are gender neutral as to the chair. The second friendly amendment that I would offer would be in rule five and paragraph A, and to strike the words "the council chairman must approve" and "requested," and to add the word "any" before "matter," and "must be approved by the council chair or by two other council members unless otherwise provided for by law," so that that sentence would read that any matter to, that any matter to be placed on this agenda must be approved by the council chair or by two other council members unless otherwise provided by law. And then finally, in rule 28, the public forum rule, to strike the word "regular" so as to require a public forum before all meetings of the council.
Okay, it's a point of order, those- Excuse me, it's a point of order, those, two of those amendments have nothing to do with the ones that Mitzi introduced, correct? For attorneys?
I agree with you, Madam Chairman, that two of those probably do not entail any of Mitzi's proposed amendments.
So we can vote on those separately?
Yes.
Okay, so let's deal with the first one, and we will accept your point A. The first issue, we have a first, does anybody second Mitzi's motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second for that? Any more discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of the amended, the proposals that Mitzi has made? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, and Chair says aye also, so that passes nine to one.
Madam Chairman, at this time, I would like to move to amend the primary motion with the friendly amendments that I stated in regards to the second, the seventh district councilwoman's previous amendment.
I'm sorry, we-
I'm asking to move to amend the primary question of the rules with the friendly amendments that I had proposed to the seventh district councilwoman. Which is-
We're on parts B and C of your previous amendment.
Regarding the council chair, gender neutrality, the two members of the council being able to-
We accepted A. Your A, the first one was the gender neutrality, so that was accepted.
Then-
The other two were separate.
Then regarding the other two, the issue regarding two members being able to add an item to the agenda, and that a public forum be held before all meetings of the council.
Is there a second for that?
I second it.
You second? Discussion?
Madam Chairwoman? I believe that the amendment, the addition of the public forum, is of vital importance. I think that it was clear with the people that came here tonight that that is one of the things that has been brought up continuously, and the need for the public to have transparency, but also to have a voice to our council and for us to open our ears and listen. So I ask everyone really think long and hard when we hopefully accept this, because I believe it's important.
Just piggybacking on that, public forum, the public forum is very important because they, people who live in the town knows the pulse of their own community. And if we can't hear what they have to say, how do we govern properly? So I pray that we keep that there, and make sure that's very important to all of us, because we all started there and now we're here. So, public forum is highly necessary.
Just a question, does this mean that any meeting that we have then has a public forum? Or is it just the town council? Does it go to everything, special meetings, everything? I'm just wondering.
You're not having-
How does that go across the board here?
I believe that the, that the motion is to have a public forum at every town council meeting, regardless of whether it is a special meeting or a regular meeting. That right now is attached to another proposal, which is very separate, which is to allow only two people to add items to an agenda. Usually, you need a vote of seven to add items to an agenda. So that is, in my opinion, a very drastic change. Yes, Mr. Florick?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I understand your point, and I just want to bring to your attention, it is possible if members of the council want to divide that question, vote on each of those proposed amendments separately.
Yes. Yes. The second one.
Regarding the seven items to be added to the agenda, a big change happened in this town, and we need to make sure that all voices are heard, regardless of if you're in the majority or the minority, or wherever you are, and that every voice counts. And that if you have a friendly friend, then you want to add something to the agenda, that it should be able to be heard and added. There are many districts in this town, and some of them, their voice isn't heard as loud. And I hope that we can join together and make sure that we can hear those districts and give a voice for the voiceless people in our town, and make sure that their councilmen can speak for them when maybe they're working four jobs and can't get here. I think that that's really important, so to have two people to add something to the agenda, make sure that all the voices are heard, regardless of your political affiliation, regardless of your economic status. If you can find one friend to co-sponsor that with you, you're at least gonna get talked about, and that matters.
Madam Chairman, a point of information, did you make a ruling that those two motions are motions to amend the agenda?
No, I did not. Mr. Florick noted that those two could be separated, that those two questions could be separated.
Well, I understand that the division of the question is a separate issue, it's whether they're amending the agenda, which would require seven votes, and it's simply a motion to amend the actual motion that's before the council, which is the rules, which would only require six votes. That was always a point of information, so I believe that approval of both of these amendments would require six votes and not seven.
Yes, and I did not remark otherwise. Okay, is there any other discussion from people we haven't not heard from yet on either of these?
Did we say we were gonna divide the question?
Would you like them divided?
Yes.
Okay, so you move to divide?
I will second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so we second that. Okay, so let's deal with the, with the two people to the agenda question, issue first. Is there any more discuss, because we've already had two people who've spoken in that debate. Any other people who'd like to speak on that debate, on that issue? Okay. Move-
Which one would you bring up first? Let's do the hearings. Hearing before all council meetings.
No, I was just asking about the second one, which is the two people, where you only require two people to add to an agenda. So far, Tina and Mark have spoken on that issue. Would you like, would anybody else like to speak on that issue?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kadim?
It's very important that the public has a voice. It's very important that they're not ignored. For so many years, it's been that way, and that's a sad reality, and it has to change. So it's highly necessary that the public is allowed to weigh in at all times, because we have to have an understanding of what's happening in their community. You live in, you live in, say, I live in the third district, I don't really know what's going on in the 10th district until someone in the 10th district can tell me what's going on. Vice versa, you wouldn't know what's going on in the third district unless I'm there or someone from my district can tell you that, or explain that to you, the urgency of the things we may or may not need. So I just want to say, I'm very thankful to support that, and I hope that it goes through. Thank you.
Okay, the chair recognizes Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I understand the process, I was trying to research this as it was going on. You've adopted rules of procedure, and section 27 essentially was the same rule that was in as, under the previous council, that's the-
Yes.
Right, so under that rule, it states that you may amend these rules, which I understand the current motion before this body to be, but it has to be approved by a vote of seven council members. So the rules you've adopted tonight, consistent with the rules you had before, require a vote of seven council members for amendment.
Yes, you are correct.
Madam Chairman, I would rise to a point of information, have we actually passed and voted on the primary motion to adopt the rules?
Yes, we did, that's Mr. Bishop's point.
We are still considering amendments to the primary rules.
My understanding is you did, if I can just clarify this, because I know you guys all want to do the business, if you hadn't amended that rule, then the old rule would apply, it says the same thing, it's seven votes, so either way, either way, to amend your rules of procedure, you need seven votes, unless you change that, which would require seven votes to change it.
Yes, it's, thank you.
Okay.
So the town attorney rules that seven votes needed. Okay? Any other discussion on this issue, on this amendment?
Madam Chairman, is that your ruling?
We've already spoken on this.
I, a point of information, is that your ruling?
If that, the town attorney is the ultimate parliamentarian on this.
I would move to appeal the decision of the Chair.
It's the decision of the town attorney.
The town attorney is someone who consults, that the Chair can consult with, and the members can consult with, but it's the Chair's decision.
I agree with the town attorney, since we had just passed rules with the amendment. You are trying to amend the rules that were passed with the amended, with the amendment that was made.
Yes, I'm moving to-
So in those rules, I'm sorry, in those rules, it clearly says in Twenty-Seven that now you're trying to amend or have new ones added by resolution with the affirmative vote of seven council members. So it is seven, and the town attorney has endorsed that.
And I'm moving to appeal the decision of the Chair.
Mr. Town Attorney, how does he do that?
At this point, if the Chair chooses, you can call the question. If you're ready to vote on it, you can call the question, but my ruling won't change.
Okay. Called a question? All in favor of the change to have only two people to add to an agenda, rather than the usual seven? Let's do this by roll call. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Chairman votes no, so it does not pass. The second thing is the requirement to have a public forum before every and all meetings, not only, not only regular meetings, but special meetings, and I'm not sure if that would also include any sort of budget workshops that we may be having, if we needed a public forum before that. Okay, any discussion on that? I'm sorry, we need a motion. So moved, second for the motion to be considering this question?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? No? Okay, then called a question? Let's do the roll call vote again.
Yes.
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 Let's be clear, what, yes is that a public forum is required? Okay, I just wanted to be clear which way the yeses were and which way the nos were. Okay, yes, yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, Chair votes yes, that passes ten zero. Thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is adjournment.
I'd like to make a personal plea, before we leave, I'd like everybody to take a moment and keep Terry Backer in your thoughts. Terry's a friend of mine for quite a few years, and he needs our thoughts and prayers while he stays in Bridgeport Hospital. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion.
Yes?
I move to amend the agenda to include two items that have been previously provided to the members of the council. One is an ordinance amending Chapter Fifteen to implement a temporary hiring freeze and other financial restraints, and the second is an ordinance amending Chapter Fifteen to require reauthorization for previously approved capital improvements.
I second.
Okay, there's a second? I recognize your motion, there's a second? I'm sorry?
I was just in case, there's no discussion on motion to waive the rules, and it requires seven votes, I didn't, because everybody's new, I just thought I'd-
I'm sorry, can you-
Madam Chairman, there's no discussion on this particular motion, and it requires seven votes for passage. Just because everybody's new, I thought I'd assist if that was-
I have a point of information.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Did we ever vote on the acceptance of the amended rules? The final vote, I mean, we did? We did, okay.
Yes.
It's been so long, I forgot.
Go ahead, Mr. Florick.
Madam Chairman, I was just wondering if we could ask Mr. Dumas to provide the town attorneys with a copy of these proposed motions?
I don't have additional copies, the council clerk has a copy, if she would like to provide it to the town attorneys.
We will call a recess. Okay, the town attorney has had an opportunity to take a look at the ordinance. Where we were was, there was a request to waive the rules, is that correct?
It was originally amend, but we need to amend the agenda and waive the rules, it's six of this, half dozen of the other, and how we do it. The town attorney has recommended we waive the rules and amend the agenda, and I have no objection to that, because-
Are you making a motion?
So I'm moving, I'm actually not moving to waive the rules yet, because we actually haven't adopted the rules. You know, this is a second point of information, in discussions with the council clerk, we moved, there was a motion by Mitzi, seconded by Vince, to adopt the rules as noticed. Then there was a motion by Mitzi, seconded by Vince, to amend that motion. That motion to amend was voted nine one, with the councilman from the Third District voting against. We never actually held a vote on the primary motion.
Okay, let me recognize Mr. Florick, who has advised otherwise.
I simply heard it differently. I thought that what Mitzi's motion was, was to adopt the rules as appended to the council agenda in the pony with the following amendments, and that's what I think everybody voted nine one on, the package.
That's what I believed also.
That certainly is not a point of information.
You don't have the floor yet, I'm sorry. Would you, would, would you like to redo that vote? To be on the safe side?
Yeah, I think for the record, that would be the safe thing to do.
Okay, so, Mitzi, would you like to make a motion to adopt the rules with your amendments?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt the rules as I amended them, and handed out the amendments to town council members.
Well, point of procedure, don't we need to move, have a vote on the amendments first?
We did.
We did that.
All right, so now we're having a vote on the primary motion?
Yes, your criticism was that we hadn't voted on the entire package, so we, just to be on the safe side, although the town attorney disagrees with you, we are redoing that vote.
Well, at that point, as a point of procedure, the seven to, the vote on the rule regarding the agenda was a, I believe, a six-four vote, which would have passed.
We can redo the entire meeting then, the second half of the meeting? No, then-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what Councilman Dumas' last comment was.
He wants a revote of the next amendment, which was the, which was the, having only two people required to add to an agenda.
Well, if you're going to allow revoting on the main motion, which is Mitzi's, which is the council rules of order as amended by Mitzi's amendments, if you're going to do that, then it's probably a motion to reconsider what you did before and to vote on that again. Once you do that, if you want to have another vote on the adding the items to the agenda, that would be okay, if you wanted to ratify it. But the outcome, if you, if this council votes to accept Mitzi's amendments, or the rules as amended by Mitzi's amendments, then it's going to require the same threshold in order to pass, which is seven votes.
Yes. Okay, so, Mitzi, you have a, you have a motion, right? Is there a second to that motion?
I thought I just made it, somebody seconded it.
Second.
Yep.
Okay. Discussion? Called to vote?
Point of information, what is the motion we're voting on?
We're actually voting on the town council rules of procedure as amended, as I amended them, or the ones I offered for amendment. The amended, the amendments were already approved.
A point of information, in the nine-one vote.
But we didn't, I don't remember approving the entire rules as amended.
Okay, the parliamentarian wants to, I'm sorry, the parliamentarian wants to contribute.
If I may, the, right now, the body owns the motion made by Councilperson Ntesi, which was to adopt the council rules of procedure as published in the agenda, as amended by the amendment that she handed out. There can be discussion related to those particular rules at this time, and whether they're a good idea or a bad idea, and all of those things, and when that discussion ceases, then there needs to be a vote, which requires seven votes for passage. If it doesn't obtain seven votes for passage, then the existing rules of procedure, the ones that the prior council had acted on, stay in effect until such time as this body can bring seven votes together for whatever set of rules it wants to adopt.
Point of information, Attorney Bishop, how many votes does it take for this council to pass its rules?
Seven votes. Seven votes, that's what, because the rules you're operating under are the rules that were left from the prior council, which say seven votes, and that act, that rule, that particular rule, the proposal that's before this body now, doesn't change. So it will be seven votes before or after.
Point of procedure, doesn't Robert's rule state that a previous session of a body cannot bind the succeeding session with its rules?
Right, and Robert's rules for this body only applies when you don't have a rule on point. So one is, some, I can't remember the exact rule number, I can look it up for you, that says that if there's a situation that's not covered by these rules, then Robert's rules applies, but in this particular case, this issue is covered by your rules, because it clearly states that if you're going to amend your rules of procedure, you need seven votes.
Okay, right now, we have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion? Motion is to pass the rules as amended by Mitzi's amendment.
Point of question, does that include the things that we voted on that Councilman Dumas added?
No.
Just basic ones.
They were separated. Those were separate questions.
Thank you.
Hold the vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Actually, we should do this a roll call? Okay. Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, and the Chair votes yes, that's nine to one, thank you. Okay, the next question, then, if we redo the second amendment, which was Mark's, Mr. Dumas' amendment regarding having only two people, only needing two people to add to a council agenda, can I have a motion to redo that vote? Okay, is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Discussion? Okay, call to vote? Let's do roll call vote there.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Chair votes no. So that does not pass. Okay. The third one was-
Forum before all council meetings.
Forum before all council meetings, do we need to redo that vote? Okay, we'll redo that vote then. Forum before all council meetings? Do I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, so moved, call to vote, Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Okay. So we've redone all of that, getting somewhere. Okay, and is there a movement to adjourn? Now that- Oh, okay, are we going, okay?
This is, I move to waive the rules, to add the two ordinances previously discussed to the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a second discussion? Phil, Mr. Young, second?
I have a question, did you state purpose, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
For suspending the rules. To, to add the two ordinances that were previously offered. The ordinance regarding the hiring freeze, and the ordinance regarding the freeze on capital expenditures.
Okay, there's, any more discussion? Ms. Manis?
Hi. I just spoke with a constituent regarding the freezing and the capital expenditures, and I wanted to applaud the mayor, he already put in a hiring freeze on December fourth for you, and I think that that's a positive step in the right direction, and want to help you get to where we need to go. We have a current budget that is in deficit, and as you and I spoke, there is no plan to amend this budget before the new budget comes into play, and that is up to us to do. The, I support this entire ordinance, and one of the reasons I came on to it is because we are in triage, we are in an emergency situation, and emergency situations call for emergency measures, and I believe that this was the right, this is the right thing to do. Whether or not it passes, it is the right thing to do.
Just point of information, there are a lot of people that I know in terms of police officers who are retiring, does that affect them? Just want to be clear, with their retirements, will they be able to get their pension, or does it freeze? How does this work?
No, if they're retiring, they'll still be able to retire. It's a separate issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to go for something-
It has nothing to do with their retirement at all.
No problem, this is part of freezing the money, I don't want to freeze up something that's going to allow them to continue what they need to do.
No, they're entitled to retire.
Okay, but also, police officers that are there, we need constantly, so I don't want to do anything to freeze something that's going to hurt us being able to have, you know, constables or police officers there, to do their job as far as protecting our town is concerned.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
Recently, this ordinance was handed out, with not enough information, enough time for me to read it. I know the town's history is that we've made premature decisions, shotgun decisions. I think that this is something that needs to be really thought through. I want to know if this plan covers the enterprise agencies as far as EMS, which creates their own funding. We have to be wise about any decision we make, and I think by making this decision, really would shoot ourselves in the foot, and I think that we have to think this through. I think we have to have our budgeting workshops, and see what the expenditures are, and go from there.
Okay, thank you. I need to apologize to the public, and to my fellow councilpersons, because waiving rules required no discussion whatsoever, we could have gone straight to the vote, so I apologize for that error. So, let us vote on that, is called a vote?
I was going to move that we send this to the ordinance committee.
We aren't there yet.
Point- Point of...
We aren't there yet.
Simply as a point of information, we haven't moved to waive that rule.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. So, call to vote. All in favor of waiving the rules currently? Let's do this by roll call. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Just want to be clear, we talking about the rules that we just had on the table for, for hiring freeze? That's what we talking about?
No, it's about waiving the rules to ultimately allow something to be placed on the agenda, because the hiring freeze is not on the agenda.
So would I allow that to be on the agenda, or having someone put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, I would.
No. No.
Yes.
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 Chair votes no, but it does pass seven-two-three. Okay.
Now, Madam Chairman, I believe it would be proper to have a motion to amend the agenda now. And I so move.
Okay, does anybody...
A second.
Okay. Vote, now, there's no discussion on this? We simply go, and we need six votes to amend, to add to the agenda?
Well, point...
Oh, I'm sorry, there is, there is discussion on this.
And, and point of procedure, we need seven votes, not six. It's under the State Freedom of Information Act.
Oh, seven to add to the agenda. Yes, okay. There is discussion on this.
Madam, Madam Chairwoman?
Yep.
If I may, there has been much discussion about adding this item to the agenda, and I understand there is some concerns with members who would like to amend the agenda, and also who would like to ensure that there's a public hearing before the agenda. So I'd simply note that those are things that we would consider. I am, I do not plan to move to waive the rule to refer to the ordinance committee.
I missed that, you do not...
I, I do not plan to make that motion to waive that rule. I plan to move to refer to the ordinance committee.
Okay, so now you're moving to...
I'm not making that moving, this is on the debate. I'm simply advising people of how I plan to proceed.
Okay. Does he have, I'm sorry, I think we're voting, no, is there any more discussion on adding items?
Motion to amend the agenda.
To the agenda? No, okay, let's move to vote then. Mr. Dumas, you may start. Yes is to add an item.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Pass.
Yes.
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 Mr. Gresko?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Now, Madam Chairman, I am going to move to waive the first reading, as a copy of the ordinance have been provided to each member of the council.
Okay, discussion? Move to vote?
I have something to say. I wanted to commend Councilor Dumas on, on making something that's easy to read, and that was easy to make a decision on, and easy to support, and included many of the things that we had discussed in November, when he brought this forward to the, to the group of us. And it, if you, I hope you all get a chance to see this, it's well done, it's organized, and it makes sense. So thank you for that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, move to vote to add items?
I just have a question.
Yes.
A clarification. Is the motion now to, I heard you say waive the reading, but is this to send these to the ordinance committee?
That would be a, that would be a subsequent motion. This is a motion merely to waive the reading, so that we don't actually have to read every single word in this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes ten-zero.
Madam Chairman, I would now move to refer these two ordinances to the ordinance committee.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. I believe these ordinances are important. I believe that the town is under, that the town is under significant financial pressure due to the projected $5.1 million budget deficit that occurred due to the voters' decision not to approve the sale of the, of our sewer authority to the Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority. We are six months into the budget. We don't have a lot of time to fix this budget. Many members of this council have spoken to the mayor, including myself, in recent weeks, and the mayor has indicated that he has no plans to address the budget deficit in the current budget, that he plans to address the deficit in the next budget. And that is why I think it is, why was my position that I think that this is imperative that we deal with it now. But, my understanding is that there are members of this body that have questions, that I think is appropriate to answer. I respect that, and I know there are a number of members of this council who have suggested what would be friendly amendments, including the councilmen from the 3rd and 4th District, both of which I ultimately would intend to accept regarding part-time employees and regarding enterprise employees. And I thank both of them for their, their insight and their addition, because I believe we as a group of 10 are much smarter than each of us individually.
I'm sorry?
And that is why I think it's important, but because of everybody's concerns, that is why I have in consultation with some wise members of this body, agreed that we should refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question.
Just a discussion, I'm sorry, you have a question?
I have a question.
As far as discussion.
Point of information, when does the ordinance committee meet next? How much time are we losing in waiting?
Madam Chairwoman, I don't know if that was directed towards me or not, but if...
No, it can't be directed towards you.
When does it meet next?
We are the ordinance committee.
Right, when?
Actually, it's a question to the council clerk.
I'm sorry, can we, can we allow the...
Madam Chairman, through you, I would request some information from the clerk.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chairman, through you, I would request some information from the clerk.
Ordinance committee generally meets the fourth Monday, and this fourth Monday happens to be day after Christmas.
Right.
The, all ordinances have to be posted in the newspaper at least five days prior to the hearing. Our purchasing department likes at least two days, and the newspaper likes at least a day or two, so it's going to be like, there's like a seven-day window there to get this to the newspaper, so it really can't go until January.
So this would be going in in January to the ordinance committee?
Twenty-eighth, wouldn't it be the 28th?
It sounds like because of advertising needs, and because of the way the holidays fall, that this, that it would not be practically possible until January. So that would be the last Monday in January.
I'm sorry? The fourth Monday, not the last.
Point of...
January is five Mondays.
Information, what was the, today's the 14th, what was the timeframe between now and the 14th, the 28th for advertising?
Two weeks.
Has to be a week.
Five days prior.
Five days prior. Put it...
Yes. I, yeah, we, it, it sounds like it would not be possible until the end of January.
Madam Chair, point of...
And, I'm sorry, no, the motion now is to refer this to the ordinance committee. And you've already spoken on the issue, is any...
Is it ordinance committee or could you public hearing?
I think it would be ordinance committee, public hearing also. Yep, so there would be some time for this. This is not something that would be going into effect immediately. Any other discussion, Mr. Harden?
I have a, a point of information, Madam Chairwoman. We could schedule a special meeting of the ordinance committee prior to the end of January, correct?
Right now, I think this is, the, you are asking for this to be referred to the ordinance committee. Now, are you trying to change your motion?
No, I'm asking, it's a point of information, simply so that it's clear...
I suppose one could.
Asking whether or not we could schedule a special meeting of the ordinance committee prior to the fourth Monday in January.
Yeah, the chair, the chair of the committee has to set up the date, and the ordinance committee hasn't met yet to select a chair. So there's some work to be done there.
Can I add one thing? I've done some calendar work, and I've received some schedules from zoning, planning, inland, wetlands. Who's this chamber? I'd have to look at, see where the chambers are available.
Okay, okay, there are a number of considerations, but it sounds as if it would not be something done this month. But there are a number of considerations. It sounds like there are calendar considerations, room reservations, and the logistics of things. So although the spirit is to have this done quickly, it sounds like it would not be as quick. Mr. Harden, did you want the floor? No? Okay, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Madam Chairwoman, I call the question?
Okay.
If there's a second to that?
Second.
Okay, vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We're voting whether to refer this to the ordinance committee.
Yes.
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 Yes, that vote's ten to zero. Before, before I take a moment to adjourn, I just want to make two brief announcements. One is that if any member of the public is interested in being on a committee or commission, please go to the town's website, look at which committees and commissions need people, and fill out an application, and please write why you are uniquely qualified to be on that committee or commission. Whatever your qualifications are, it doesn't necess, doesn't need to be academic or work, you may have other special talents that you could, that you could provide for the town. And that, I think that's the, and then the second announcement is that there are refreshments downstairs for those of you who have persevered this long. Okay. The third announcement was that this council is planning on doing budgeting workshops in early January as we can schedule them. Those, of course, would be announced to the public, be open to the public, and we will be going through the budget very carefully, with the goal of submitting a revised fiscal year 2016 budget, and with an eye on creating the fiscal year 2017 budget. So do keep that in mind also. Okay, is there movement to adjourn?
Movement to adjourn, but also a point of reflection, if, I would like to just say something before we go. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to say thank you to everyone who came out and voted for all of us for change. I pray that we all do what we need to do to move the town forward, and if there's any questions, feel free to reach out to me at any time. Just want to thank God, my family, the Democratic Town Committee, Stephanie Phillips, as well as so many other people, Pat Petuski and so forth. I just want to say thank you for choosing me, and thank you so much, and have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Celebrate your holidays safely and return home safely. Thank you and God bless.
Okay, there is a movement to adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And please forgive us for our growing pains here.